Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting on this 4th of March 2024. The City Council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At meetings, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other businesses of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website, or for those who are back here, right as you walk into the right. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous City Council meeting videos available on the city's website as well. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, Ms. Clerk?
Yes. Councilmembers Blaisdell?
Here.
Barajas?
Present.
Grim?
Here.
Harpster?
Present.
Paralas?
Present.
Mayor Protem Milney?
Present.
And Mayor Serrano?
I am here.
If you all join, if you all join with me into the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, oh, of course. Lovely. My iPad reset. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are... Hey, actually, hey Director Rice, can I have you reset my password? Yeah, I'll be using another iPad for a moment, but yeah. It's, it kicked me out of, it kicked me out of everything, anyway. All right, I'll just read from Mr. Milney. "All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion has listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Further discussion is desired by council members. Item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately." So with that, Item A, Approval of the Meeting Minutes for February 20th, 20th, 26th, and 29th, 2024. Bills and Communications for approving claims in the total amount of $3,616,476 and $0.76 and write-off totaling $29,549, and that is to link with her bad debt. Resolution Number 4424, Approval of Ecology Loan, WQC 2024 Pasco Quad 07, that's 1-0-0-0-7 for the construction of the WT-WWTP Phase 2 improvements. Resolution Number 4425, Approval of Ecology Loan, WQC 2024 Pasco 00091 for construction of PWRF Phase 2 improvements. Resolution Number 4426, Ratification of Acquisition of USBR Parcel Number 113140039. Resolution Number 4427, Soul Source for caustic soda purchase. Resolution Number 4428, Supplement Number 1 with HDR Inc. for Sylvester Sylvester Street Safety Improvements. And Item H, Resolution Number 4429, Purchase of Horizon Pool Air Dome System. With that, Mr. Milney, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. And it was second Mr. Harpster, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we're gonna do that as a, as a roll call vote, my bad there.
Okay, Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
Yes.
Councilmember Grim?
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster?
Yes.
Councilmember Paralas?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Milney?
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano?
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Alrighty, with that, we will move on to Item Number 5, Proclamation and Announcements There Are None Listed. And then we will move on to Item Number 6, Public Comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for, for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after deliberate process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will be limited to three minutes by the mayor. You'll see to my right, the timer, it goes green, yellow, red, and so I will ask ahead of me having to kick you off at red, please, please limit it to three minutes. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments or submit them written for consideration by council outside of the formal meeting. And lastly, anyone called upon, please state your name and city of residence for the public comment. So with that, the floor is open to public. Oh, Mr. Vargas.
There you go.
Sorry. I come before you to request that the plans to demolish the historic underpass in Pasco be placed on hold until a public hearing can be held to assess the depth of public feeling about the planned destruction. Now, as City Council members, as candidates, you ran on a promise to open up government to have more community engagement, be transparent. I can't think of an issue more appropriate than this one here than to allow the public's expressions of views about the planned destruction of the, of the underpass. Now, for many of us, the underpass is a monument and a cultural link to our past. It has exceptional value in commemorating, illustrating the history of Pasco. Now, I would not expect a railroad company that has its headquarters in Fort Worth, Texas to understand that, but I would expect you to appreciate the value that this underpass has for us. Now, the, there are thousands of underpasses in the U.S. that are being maintained and preserved. Why not ours? By the way, the railroad company that I mentioned with headquarters in Fort Worth has an underpass which crosses the Texas Highway 183 and an underpass which is hailed as an exceptional network and a good example of cooperation. It was built in 1935, two years before ours was. So, in my view, the underpass will not be any more a safety or security concern than it has been for the past eighty-seven years, perhaps less so, as we would have lighting and cameras installed, and maybe gates put at the one side and the others to limit people coming in at night, for example. But it affords an easily accessible path for pedestrians, bikers, you know, and joggers to use. Also, from a practical point of view, it's kind of your backup plan, so when you have that first major collision on the overpass, you've got that secondary road that you, that the traffic can use, you know, until the repairs are made. I, I know that some, some will say the city's already signed an agreement with the railroad on the underpass, which, under which the city would abandon the easement with respect to the underpass. As a result, I know the city planned to fill in the tunnel. Now, we learned in the Sunday's Herald that the railroad came in very late in the process and demanded that the underpass structure be demolished, which adds a cool $2.5 million additional cost to the city. In all, according to the article, you're looking at north of $6 million for, for costs associated with the additional construction. In my view, the railroad cannot add requirements that have a significant financial impact for the city without reopening the agreement, and we should do that. So I, I think this gives you an opportunity to call for a public hearing and let the public tell you what they think about it. I urge you to call such a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Anyone else? Gentlemen?
My name is Mike Miller, and owner of Moon Security here in Pasco. I actually came because I couldn't get any sympathy at home, but three weeks ago, I wanted to make sure to give kudos to the fire chief and his paramedics that were able to pick me up and take me to the hospital and get me taken care of, and they did a great job on that. Second thing that I want to talk about was just a real quick update on the DPDA. Got my article that TriCity Herald did, and stated that the president of DPDA had embezzled those funds in 2015. And that concerned me because I was president of that time, and that was the executive director that embezzled the funds, not Mike Miller with Moon Security, president of DPDA. So, as you were looking at, different opportunities to make sure that you're double-checking, fact-checking those people that are involved, you need to be careful about that. Volunteers were never given authority to expend money. That was done by executive directors, that was done by higher-up officers in, in the DPDA, but in my situation, that was not the case. We went through the audit, and the audit came through, stated what we did, and we were able to get money back from the insurance company to make sure that there was reimbursement from that direction. Anyway, I, I'm asking that you make, and I'm using this as a platform since TriCity Herald did, I contacted them, and they retracted it for what it was worth, but it, I'd already gotten comments from some clients and employees that saw that this was stated such. So, I'm looking to protect my name and the, and the company's name, but also just, I still have a heart for DPDA and all that is done, and I'm reminded of all the good things, forerunner PDDA and DPDA that allowed us to have Fire Red Food Festival, Cinco de Mayo, Farmer's Market, all of those things that came out of those, those two organizations. So make sure there's positive things that have happened that the City of Pasco has done to help this community in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Ashford. I'm from Kennewick, and I'm with the Local Party for Socialism and Liberation. I spoke here last month, asking City Council to introduce a resolution condemning the ongoing genocide and colonial project of Israel against the people of Palestine. In the past month, the genocide has amplified. Israel has now threatened to launch a ground invasion into the Palestinian city of Rafa, which during the current war has had its population increased to 1.4 million. That's over the half the population of Gaza, being displaced due to the sheer number of people displaced from their homes by Israel since October. That's 1.4 million people in 25 square miles. The casualties already in the tens of thousands will be the most devastating we have yet seen. Fair question to ask, how does this impact the City of Pasco, and what could we possibly do about it? The TriCities has a history to reckon with racism and segregation. From the construction of the Hanford Projects, from the Hanford Project until the late 60s, black and white workers lived in forcibly segregated communities. The black community pushed into East Pasco and their communities neglected by the city. I'd like to thank the council members, condemn that part of our history. But today, over 800,000 federal tax dollars are levied in Pasco locally every year to fund the Israeli military and uphold their own segregated racist apartheid system. This federal funding of Israel by our country is a backbone supporting the continuation of their apartheid and genocide. With our segregated history, if we have truly moved on, we have a duty to condemn systems of apartheid and racial violence when we see it happening on such a scale today, and do our part to put an end to it. Our local federal representatives, Representative Dan Newhouse, Senators Patty Murray and Mariah Cantwell, have failed to put a sufficient foot forward in ending our funding to Israel. But the City of Pasco can do something. We can exert pressure as a local government in their district. You can take the right side in condemning apartheid Israel and its slaughter to atone for our past and show our representatives that the people of Pasco don't want our money flowing into genocide and apartheid. We could put that foot forward and play our part in this historical movement against racist apartheid, against genocide, and against the modern colonial project. That is why I am asking the City Council to represent the demands of its constituents and pass a resolution condemning apartheid Israel, its colonization of Palestine, and the genocide it is conducting. Other city councils have passed resolutions regarding this conflict. It's a thing city councils have been doing, and I'm asking you to, thank you.
Do we have any additional comments?
Hi, my name is Valerie Torres, and I'm here with Lewis Street Tire, which is located right across the new overpass construction that's currently happening, and I'm here not just on that behalf, but on behalf of the other 20 businesses or more located on that plaza, which all the business owners are behind me. I'm here just to bring to the attention that all of those businesses on that plaza need some type of help and support. The businesses have been struggling since the road closure. It is completely blocked off. I did resend some emails earlier in the week, which unfortunately, we didn't, I didn't receive a response. I sent that out to Melissa, Peter, Pete, and Jacob, and I did hear back from Leo Parales with a little bit of just, hey, what's going on, walked a little bit of downtown, but ultimately we're here because they said they were gonna close it for two months, and two months is too long for all those small businesses in that plaza. Just in this last week, we have, it's a ghost town. We have no customers coming in. The streets have been blocked off and barricaded. They've attempted to open it up a little bit, but the damage has already been done. They've publicized, avoid Lewis Street, avoid this area. We have lost over 90% of ourselves, and that's not just for me, that is for all the businesses on that plaza. We are struggling, and we're not big corporations. We're all small family-owned businesses on that plaza. We can't afford to go two months with no income. I feel like with the construction that was done, it was planned in a very long span, yet nobody planned anything for us on that plaza and how we were going to get help, how we were gonna make it through. Ultimately, we have a few things that we would like to be considered. If they can consider opening the streets when there's no construction going on, we've noticed they work Monday through Thursday. If they could possibly work at night to possibly get more customers down there, since the streets are very confusing, it looks like we are closed. And if in any way or sense there's any funds that can help these businesses. It is not just one of us, it is 20 of us. I emailed lists to anybody, and I can resend them again if you guys would like to, I have them printed here with me. We need some type of funds or help, guidance, because those businesses across the bridge are going to suffer. We're not small, like I said, we're not corporations, we're real families. This affects the real people, real children, everyone is dependent of this, and with just this one week, we've already had to let people go. We've considered closing because it's every day into the negatives. We really need some type of solution because us having a bridge that costed millions of dollars is not gonna benefit us if we are closed in two months. And that, of course, is just with approximate eight weeks, we all know that it could be extended. We really need some help, and there's, that's what all of us in here are, most of the business owners. We just need some sort of guidance and help. We don't want to close our doors. Thank you.
We appreciate that. If you want to leave those copies, if you'll hand them...
Yeah, I have one, and I can, I have the other one.
Okay.
Do you want me to give them to you guys directly, or?
You're certainly welcome to do that to the clerk.
Yeah. I'll give those to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next gentleman.
Hello, councilmen and women, everybody. My name is Pedro, I'm here from the City of Pasco, same, part of the team over here, downtown business owners, and I guess I want to say thanks for starting to build a nice bridge and some roadway, looking forward to that. I just hope that we're all here to benefit from that when it's all said and done. Just like Valeria said before, businesses really, really slowed down a lot. A lot of businesses here rely on that traffic to be going down there. When their businesses get visited, those who are going in to eat, those people stop and they walk around, businesses, the businesses that have people that have them going in to use or to get their vehicles repaired, those people hang around and walk around. That's not happening, like Valeria, and I'm sure many of these other business owners will attest to, businesses slowed down a lot, and it's not just impacting us personally, but like she said, our employees, our staff, having to cut down on their hours. And I would like to second that motion or to look for people to support for the time that the construction's being done to be happening, maybe at night, like I see done in bigger cities, opening up those streets, maybe recirculating information that the streets are open or the businesses are open, and some kind of mitigation for the losses of business that's being done. I know that other cities, other cities have had these kind of things happen where they do things to offset the cost that is impacting businesses. Does something like that exist here in Pasco? And if so, why were we not educated or informed about it? Maybe my ears and eyes were shut to it, maybe I'm, I just got my head down deep and I'm doing so much work that I didn't hear about it, but nobody said anything about that, and I know that there's a lot of resources that we would benefit from if they were there for us. So, on behalf of the other owners here, we're asking for support for mitigating the cost of potential income loss and the income that is lost, looking for the hours of operation or construction to be changed, and we're looking for some, I guess, a serious commitment that eight weeks is what it's gonna take, because we've seen what happens when government talks about shutdowns happening just a couple weeks, and then things get long, and in construction, same things happened a lot. So if this goes from eight weeks to nine, ten, twelve, sixteen, that's gonna be a lot of trouble for a lot of businesses here. Anyway, again, my name's Pedro, thank you for your time.
Do we have any additional comments? Yes?
Um, hi, my name is Vidi, and I'm a part of Studio 41. We have about, sorry, I get really nervous. Um, we have about 12 chairs in our salon, and around this time is when we really look for walk-ins. If we have one client, okay, that's fine, because we can get by with just one simple client, that's fine. We say, okay, well, maybe we'll have some walk-ins, but since this has started, we have like maybe four to five people maybe walk in, when there's a total of 12 of us. So it does kind of tend to slow everything down. Around this time, which is like January, off until like April, May, sometimes it does tend to already be slow, so we kind of already have to find ways to resource when that does happen. So now that we're being affected of it a little bit more because of the slow time and then it already being closed off, it just does kind of stop us from getting the foot traffic or just anybody thinking, because it does look like it's closed. So I would like to see if maybe as well, like as everyone else can maybe, sorry, I'm getting nervous, um, to see if there are some other options that can be made, different resources, like they said, maybe at night, trying to open it off when no one's working, or Fridays maybe, open up the streets, but anything that would help, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Blanca Garcia. I'm the owner from the 218 West Lewis Street, just in front of the new overpass construction, and we having a lot of problems right now. We happy because we're gonna have a new bridge and we're gonna, that, it's something new for downtown Pasco. But the thing is, that we owner, we own the building, but we pay taxes for that, you know? And it's getting more harder to pay property taxes when this type of things happens, like right now, we have some tenants. So if the business is closed, if we don't have customers coming in, in the, in the area, they're not gonna make money and they, they can't pay rent. So they come to me and they start asking me. That's why I'm here with you guys, because we need help for our business, because we want downtown Pasco grow up, but we're gonna make a team with you guys. And this is the first time I'm talking in front of you. I sent some emails before because we have problems with the homeless people, they just doing drugs in front to our businesses. So it's one thing and another thing happening all the time, so we want you guys help us, because like I say, we pay property taxes, we pay taxes for everything, and it's getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Can I translate for her? Can I have someone to translate for her?
I know we had talked about having a translator, but I...
Mayor, we had hired somebody, but they did not show up. Sorry about that. Please.
I don't mind if I'm able to.
Yeah, that works.
It won't be perfect, but...
That's all right, I can try, but it will be less than perfect.
Buenas noches a todos, muchas gracias por escucharnos y por su atención.
She just said, "Good evening, thank you for listening and for your attention."
Yo se que, yo soy también este, dueña de negocio aquí en el centro de Pasco frente a la construcción.
She's also a business owner right across the plaza from the construction. She owns Jochos Tacos.
Tengo nueve años en el negocio y este, soy una mujer sola, lo, todo lo que, el income que tengo del negocio es para mi familia, para mis hijos y para mí.
She has nine years with her business, but she is a single woman, and she is a sole provider of her household.
So tengo que estar trabajando ahorita bastante tiempo para poder mantener el negocio abierto porque no le puedo pagar empleados para que me puedan ayudar en algún horario del, del día.
She's constantly having to work because she's not able to afford to have employees right now because sales have been down, which means she has to be there to do everything herself since she can't afford to have employees with no customers.
Este, la verdad es que no quisiera cerrar las puertas de mi negocio porque como les digo es el único income que yo tengo para mi familia.
She doesn't want to have to close her doors down, it is her only income for her family.
Y por eso nos acercamos a ustedes para pedirles que nos ayuden, que nos apoyen, que encontramos una solución para, para esta situación.
That's why she comes to you to please help her find a solution so that she doesn't have to do that. She wants help and some sort of guidance.
Y pues, por eso venimos todos aquí, este, unidos, para que ustedes nos escuchen y podamos encontrar una solución juntos.
That's why she came, so that we can hopefully all find a solution together.
Creo que es todo. Gracias.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, good.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Howland from Kennewick. The TriCities has been my home for over 25 years, and as like my comrade from before, I'm also a member of the Local Party for Socialism and Liberation. I've been alarmed about the ongoing silence in this area regarding the ongoing genocide happening in Palestine. As my comrade mentioned, as of today, in less than a week, Israel is poised to commence a ground invasion of Yafa, the alleged, Rafa, the alleged safe zone and final unoccupied region of the Gaza Strip. Between the start of that campaign five months ago and this upcoming invasion, all of our regional politicians have been at best mute on the issue and at worst happily chiming in on the side of Israeli apartheid. This must end, and the community is done hearing excuses. Some people might say, "This is a local body, foreign issue has nothing to do with us." This is untrue, not so long as the TriCities collectively sends two and a half million dollars of federal taxes to the Israeli military every year, nearly 1 million of which come from Pasco. For as much groaning as I hear locally about government's misuse of the people's tax dollars, I would think that perpetuating genocide is... For as much groaning as I hear locally about governments misuse of the people's tax dollars, I would think that perpetuating genocide is relatively, uh, high on the list of abuses to condemn. Maybe I'm wrong. And for all the tri-cities talk about building inclusive communities and overcoming its colonial segregationist history, our politicians don't seem particularly bothered when our federal government and state representatives cheer on apartheid and genocide abroad with our dollars, in no small part in our name. Perhaps gerrymandering the same communities chilled and frightened by our local inaction is more important. The point stands, Gaza has everything to do with us. Aaron Bushnell set himself ablaze rather than be complicit in this genocide and the tri-cities' local governments can't be bothered to so much as pick up a pen. If the council has an ounce of dignity or humanity in it, it will join the popular call signing a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Palestine and end to all aid to the Israeli regime until it ends its occupation. Work with the people to demand justice for Palestine, or there will be the blood of an entire people on your hands and the world will never let you forget it.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comment? Oh, yep. Sounds good.
Buenas tardes. Uh, mi nombre es Rebecca Ortiz. Uh, yo vengo en representación de Upeles Oroglas.
Her name is Rebecca Ortiz and she's with Upeles Auto Glass, which is across the underpass as well, or the overpass.
Primeramente les doy las gracias por haberme dejado estar en presencia de ustedes, por permitirme, uh, el escucharme.
She says that she would like to thank you guys for giving her the opportunity to listen to her concerns.
Lo siento estoy muy nerviosa pero quisiera en este momento, um, tocar el corazón de ustedes y que ustedes se pusieran en el lugar de cada uno de nosotros.
She says that she would like for you guys to touch your hearts and please put yourself in her situation of all the business owners on that plaza.
Porque somos negocios pequeños.
We are small businesses.
Muchos de nosotros batallamos muchísimo, uh, al punto de no tener que comer para poder abrir nuestros negocios.
A lot of us are struggling to the point of not having enough to eat or make money to buy food to eat.
Uh, nuestros hijos se mantienen de ese lugar.
Our kids need that money and that they need our, these are supported by our businesses.
Estamos muy agradecidos porque nos están haciendo un puente que pienso que en el futuro va a ser muy bueno para nosotros.
We are very thankful for the bridge. We believe it is going to be very profitable to us in the future.
Pero en este momento nosotros estamos seriamente pensando en que en algún momento vamos a tener que cerrar nuestros negocios.
But in this moment, it's becoming scary because we're contemplating having to close our businesses.
Porque nosotros simplemente en este negocio tenemos que pagar de quince mil a veinte mil dólares al mes. Dinero que no está entrando.
Um, in this moment, we have to pay anywhere from quince mil to mil quinientos? No, fifteen, fifteen thousand, sorry. We have to pay our employees.
Nuestros gastos.
Our expenses.
Y tenemos que nosotros, yo como dueña pensar en que voy a dejar a mis empleados sin darles de comer a su familia. No estoy hablando solo por mí sino por las familias de ellos.
And it also puts pressure on me to think that I might have to leave my employees the same without a job, without being able to have the means to buy food.
Ellos dependen de lo que nosotros podamos darles.
They are dependent of me and what I'm able to give them. And what you guys are able to help us with as well.
Para no poder, para nosotros no perder nuestro negocio, ellos no pierdan.
So that we don't close our businesses.
Y ellos no pierdan el alimento para sus familias.
And they don't lose a way to feed their family.
Si ustedes pueden ayudarnos, hagan el favor de ayudarnos.
If you guys are able to help us, we would appreciate it.
Nuestro negocio personalmente, como les decía, nos quedamos mucho tiempo sin comer y no quisiera que los que trabajan para nosotros se queden sin comer. Y todos, todos nuestros negocios que están alrededor. Muchas gracias.
She says that she doesn't wanna have to be left without a means to feed everybody, without a means to feed her own family and feel that pressure from everybody around her. That she's very thankful for listening to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Hi, good night. Uh, I try to do my best. My English is not really, really good, but I try. Uh, my name is Jose Tejes. When the, when the project begin, like around twenty, I mean, uh, ten years ago, around, I was in the first, uh, place with the, the, uh, the city moved the, the business. I was in the, uh, first in Luis. I mean, the first and clerk. Um, after that, I tried, I tried to keep my business running. Right now I'm in this, um, second Louis in the corner. Uh, it's really hard right now for us, not only for me, for all the, uh, owners around, keep the business because we pay the rent and, um, if we don't have enough, uh, customers all the time, it's really hard because at the end of the month, we, we must pay for everything, rent, uh, bills, water, utilities, everything. Um, right now, everybody is, uh, really, really low in the business. And even with the first time when the city moved my business to that place right now, it's, uh, the first time the city helped to the, to the owners, I mean, the, uh, the person who have the, all the business around. But right now we are looking for something else, like maybe the, uh, works in the night, uh, the people can, I don't know, uh, or help with some, uh, money for the business if the city can, because it's, uh, it's really, really, um, hard to keep the business with, um, small amount of money every month. We, we really appreciate if the city can take the moment and thinking we can help us with something. In any way, having the city come help, I think we, uh, we can appreciate that. We can, we can use that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call a bit of an audible here, uh, Mr. Lincoln. Uh, I know we had intended for miscellaneous discussion at the back end of the meeting to address some of these comments about these businesses, but can you fill us in or Mr. Gonzalez, whoever, Ms. Sarah, whoever it is, on what has been done, what's being done to alleviate these concerns for these particular businesses? Um, I know we don't, I suspect we don't have a response on the request for financial assistance at the moment. Um, it's something that we'd have to look into and I'm not sure where or if we could pull it. Um, I, quite frankly, I don't think that's an option, but, uh, without digging into that further, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but Ms. Sarah, if you could speak, uh, as to what the city is doing to alleviate some of these construction and other concerns.
Good evening, mayor and council members and the public. Well, I actually have asked our project manager, Michael Allman, to come together, come here tonight to share all the actions taken. We have a short overview in, uh, with some slides that will help aid the discussion of the area impacted and some of the efforts performed to date.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Um, I guess the question for those in the audience, uh, will we need assistance, miss in translating for some folks? Since we, I know we didn't have our translator here, but, uh, yeah, I was gonna, for the young lady that was translating. Um, I think if you think it'd be fruitful, it wouldn't hurt to have it. Yeah, let's do that. So, I mean, we'll try to keep it. Guess we'll keep it short and bungy, Michael.
Alright, uh, mayor, thanks for the audible. Um, council, uh, appreciate you guys having us here tonight, uh, here to talk about the Lewis Street overpass project. Uh, council, in the last week, there's been a lot of community concern voiced about this project and that's something that, that we don't take lightly. Um, I was, oh, excuse me. Uh, I was given the opportunity to come down and meet with the business owners personally. Here, here's some of the concerns that people had, uh, which, uh, I really appreciate them sharing honestly to me what's going on. So to start with, I'd like to show you what the final design from our plans for this area is, just so there's a basic understanding of what we plan on at the end of construction. On the left side of the screen, you see Second Avenue and on the right side of the screen is Tacoma. The portion on the bottom, uh, corresponds with where the existing Lewis Street is.
Um, pa la mano derecha es la primera y pa la izquierda es la tercera. Está enseñando, um, the top is what it looked like, you said, sorry?
This portion down here is existing Lewis Street. This is the new bridge up here. Uh, in between those two will be a new grass area. Uh, other improvements in this area include new sidewalk, uh, new storm drainage facilities. Uh, in addition to that, there will be new aesthetics for the area, park benches, things like that as well. Um, ultimately trying to promote a kind of downtown environment. So this plan shows what the current traffic control, uh, detour route is. The red arrow that you see on the screen represents the detour route? The blue, uh, squares that you see highlighted are what we'd call limited access areas. And the box in green represents closed areas. Uh, many of the business owners here today are within the blue square on the left, which is between third and first. So our detour route takes people down fourth to A Street and then back up Oregon Avenue.
De la cuatro a la A para regresar a la Oregon Street.
Following my meeting on Thursday with the business owners, um, we've worked to provide some additional signage to the area. The red and orange, red slash orange dots that you see up here represent areas where there's going to be some additional signage placed in English and in Spanish, um, that was just installed this evening. The squares that you see up there in orange, those represent, uh, portable changeable message boards. The big ones that display text that changes. And those have messages in both English and Spanish alternating. Here's just a few pictures from today of what the current configuration looks like if you'd not, have not had the chance to drive the area yourself. So again, on the left picture, uh, I believe currently some additional signage was installed, uh, this evening. Just another couple pictures, uh, of the area, um, in question. The picture on the right is of second. And the picture on the left is between first and second. So I think what council is interested in hearing about, mayor, based on your, your question or what are some of the mitigation alternatives? So the mitigation alternatives, I'm sorry.
Trabajen de noche, que trabajen el tiempo, el proyecto más rápido en vez de las doce semanas que habían proponido. Que dice tengan acceso al alternativo, que es, um, acceso por el callejón y que tengan acceso a estacionamiento para los negocios. Y la tercera opción es, uh, comunicarse mejor con los negocios, los negocios localizados en esa área. Por ejemplo, tener cita semanalmente para ver cómo se van a mirar los proyect, el proyecto en las tres semanas adelante.
The first item is night work, which has been mentioned several times by, um, several of the people speaking tonight. Night work is certainly a possibility. It's just not something that is currently in the contract. So what you'll find with that is working at night, uh, would, would certainly increase the overall cost of doing a portion of work on the project. I'll leave it, uh, fairly vague right now, cause it's a very complex question of what they can and can't do. I've spent probably four or five hours on the phone with our, um, contractor and um, construction manager in the last week discussing how we could potentially do something like this. Another alternative is to speed up contract work specifically, um, while we have the closure in place. And that would, the eight-week closure, I actually do, that is a, uh, legitimate timeline for this project. Uh, and I do believe we will hit that timeline. There's been some concerns raised about that tonight, so I'm not concerned with that personally. The work within the closure, the contractor works a four-ten schedule, so there's the opportunity to work a Friday and potentially a Saturday associated with that to speed up the timeframe associated with the current closure as well. Another concept is working on alternative accesses for the businesses. That may include, uh, working on access through the alley. However, we do understand many of the businesses obviously operate out of the street side of their building, not the alley side of it. We're also working at the, looking at the alternative of creating a designated parking area, uh, for these businesses and try and publicize that to create a singular spot for people to park and access the businesses. We're also working at the, looking at the alternative of creating a designated parking area, uh, for these businesses and try and publicize that to create a singular spot for people to park and access the businesses.
Están tratando de hallar una área donde puedan tener estacionamiento para todos los negocios, que sea un poquito más designada, accesible para todos los negocios en esa área.
And finally, we need to increase our project communication with the property owners.
Finalmente quiere, quiere mejorar la comunicación entre los negocios y los del proyecto.
So we're looking at creating a weekly meeting with the property business owners, um, with our three-week look-ahead schedule.
Lo que quieren hacer es ser citas semanalmente con los negocios. What is a three-week lookout, what does that consist of?
The, the next three weeks of work.
So semanalmente hacer una cita para ver cómo van a seguir cada tres semanas para dar una idea qué es lo que sigue para el proyecto y cómo les va a afectar al negocio.
We find the three-week look-ahead is an effective tool because you can accurately project what's gonna happen during that timeframe as opposed to, say, two, three, four months out.
Uh, lo que, lo que proponen es que con la, darte una idea de lo que viene en las tres semanas en adelante, te da tiempo como negocio, saber lo que vas a esperar, o cómo va a cambiar todo, te da una idea de poder, um, añadir tu negocio, plan ahead, I'm trying to think of what that, planear en adelante. Sí, para el futuro.
So those are the major mitigation alternatives that we've identified as, uh, potentially feasible for the project.
Estas son las cuatro opciones que él mira como que son alternativas, que sí son posibles para un proyecto, del proyecto de Lewis Street Overpass.
We also looked into some of the outreach efforts just to understand what has transpired on the project.
So this is like the meetings that have been held, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so lo que tiene aquí en la pantalla son como todas las juntas que han tenido para publicizar lo que está pasando y los, eh, publicizando lo que está pasando con el puente y los proyectos y cómo va a cambiar alrededor de nosotros, esas son las fechas que tenían como sus citas.
And certainly this doesn't change where everybody is at currently, but I do think it is important for our team to go back and understand what sort of communication did happen in the area.
Él entiende que no cambia la situación en el momento ahorita, pero sí quiere enseñar que sí ha habido, ha habido oportunidades donde sí quisieron hablar con el público.
The primary, uh, outreach was done in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
La, la primera, the initial outreach, la primera vez que quisieron comentar con los negocios alrededor de nosotros fue en dos mil dieciocho.
En realidad es, no es la primera vez, sino los mayores esfuerzos de comunicación.
Love it, thank you, thank you.
Door-to-door outreach actually was done back in, uh, October of twenty eighteen. So there was, there was a attempt by the project team during the design phase. I understand that is a long time ago with this project. Correct.
So en dos mil dieciocho fueron puerta a puerta para hablar a negocios, para comentar y enseñarles lo que iba a pasar con el proyecto, pero sí entiende que de dos mil dieciocho a este tiempo ya ha pasado muchos años.
With that counsel, I, I suspect there may be some questions for me associated with this.
Para terminar, le está preguntando al council si tienen preguntas para él.
Um, I'll be honest, it's not my intent to really formalize this in dialogue. I see your light, I'll give you thirty seconds.
Three seconds?
That's what I'll give you.
Oh, wow, okay. Um, okay, well, now, I, I, I've, I've liked some of the improvements that have been made, um, thus far. When I got the email, I went down that night to go take pictures and stuff and see what was going on. Um, I actually work on construction sites and so know a little bit about signage and, I mean, even for me, I was confused. I don't understand why the detour route takes us to Oregon. I think we should be able to shorten that, especially if we're allowing local access to kind of get through, perhaps use Columbia as a way to get to those businesses. Um, in regards to money for the businesses.
Or do you want me to translate this too?
If you want, I only got thirty seconds, I guess.
And I think we're there.
Huh?
We're there.
I, can I finish, can I finish it?
You can finish the thought. If you want to address it in miscellaneous after, we can push this back.
I don't want to, okay.
I, I didn't want to overtake the meeting with this. I want to make sure these folks are heard on the front end.
Okay, well, I'll just finish it up real quick. So in regards to the monies for, uh, money, funds for the businesses, after, you know, seeing the devastation, I met a couple of business owners, um, you know, it was hard looking them in the eye. I went and did some research and, and places like Seattle, they put away funds to, for, you know, for these type of impacts. Um, you know, I'm, obviously people don't have anything on the books, but, I mean, there is ways to do that. I, I, I saw a lot of, uh, funding from CDBG, um, uh, funds over in the downtown Seattle area where they literally had to shut down, um, streets so that, you know, they can do the work and they had to give money, they gave money to businesses. Um, I mean, we have ARPA funds. I mean, I know they've been earmarked, but, you know, I hate to see fifteen to twenty businesses go under. I think this is a really big issue and, and I know we care about downtown, and so sometimes we just have to, you know, figure it out, and I think we need to figure it out. This is a, you know, these people are coming in here, this is, this is their livelihoods. And so I'd hate to see, again, with a bridge, I didn't, I didn't try to make that as a slight in that email, but, you know, a bridge that's gone well, well over budget, and then to have fifteen, twenty businesses go under, it's just not a good look for the city of Pasco. It's just not, you know, I hate to see a cross-over bridge and see, look over to my right or left and see fifteen and twenty businesses not there anymore. So I think we need to figure it out. We need not to, uh, you know, come back with, no, we can't do that, we can't, you know, gifting to public funds. There is a way, um, so we just have to figure it out and, uh, and, and kind of go from there, and from there. Thank you, Mayor, for your time, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Michael, for the presentation.
Uh, Mayor, would you like me to stick around during the miscellaneous to ask questions or answer questions?
Yeah, I'm questioning whether or not we may want to take a break. Let's, let's just kind of process it as the meeting goes, um. What I will ask is, and Miss, if you can come back up and translate, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, or-
Valerie.
Valerie. Um, what I would ask is, to the extent we have additional comments on this section, uh, that, yes, Mr. Cortinas, I see you, I see you. That you would bring new information or additional information, uh, I think to the extent that we, we, we've heard very similar comments, um, you know, it'd be really helpful if, if someone has other ideas than what's been presented, so if, I don't know if you want.
If anyone has any other ideas.
Uh, other, other comments, um, outside of kind of what we've heard, um.
Él no más quiere saber si alguien tiene más comentarios, a pesar de lo que ya hemos dicho, porque mucho hemos dicho los mismos puntos, si alguien más tiene algo que quieran añadir o decir sobre este proyecto.
Yeah, okay, with that, I- Well, Mr. Cortinas is standing.
Yeah, it's always Al, Álvaro.
Yeah, go ahead, much.
Les voy a invitar a todos los que están aquí presentes, que tienen negocio en el Yaun Chan, que se han sido afectados, que por favor hagan su comentario ahora. Tenemos un espacio reservado al final de toda la junta para comentarios misceláneos. Este, no sé si tengan tiempo para quedarse y hacer sus comentarios a esta, a ese tiempo. Va a tardar quizá una hora, no sé cómo les digo, no sé si tengan tiempo, pero les invito que por favor, si tienen comentarios, háganlos ahora. Basically what I'm saying is inviting everyone that has a comment that is impacted by the construction to please either stick around for miscellaneous comment or make your comments now.
Thank you, and, and I will recognize that Mr. Cortinas has been standing patiently. Come on up. And, and then, then possibly this gentleman in the blue sweatshirt.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to come up and, uh, say a few words concerning this, uh, this, this situation. Last Friday, we were invited, the Latin Business Association, President Galvinsio Felipe and myself, to meet with this group of people and we found them very upset, very angry. Uh, we looked over some of their books, a lot of them have lost tons of money. You did a very good job of closing it down, you did. Everybody knew the place was closed. The employees, the owners, and the customers knew it was closed. It was an edge of glencymore part of the city. Of not making it easy for access for not even the owners, not even the property owners, not even the customers, or the employees make it to work. There's three businesses that have already closed, there's seventeen businesses that are on edge of closing, and so we were lucky to meet with Mike and a rep- and representative from the city of Pasco that to translate. We met all together, uh, I think we were helped to calm the waters and try to give a little bit of he- hope to the business owners. I think we did a little bit of that. But I, what I want to do is go over some of the signage, because the, the signage is terrible. First of all, there was no signage as of Thursday when we went down there. There was one big sign that said, and all the street signs were said, "Street closed." Everybody obeyed. But then you had some customers that went down, tried to do business, they got ticketed by the Pasco Police Department. So we have three tickets that I think they need to be thrown out because they just tried to do business with these businesses and they got ticketed. So that's a solution. One of the solutions we need to do is to try to get those tickets taken away. The other thing is the signage, the signage is just not, it's not there. I just saw a new one that says, "Business is open" in English. Come on, we're in Pasco, Washington. Majority Latino community, and we have English signs only. There's one sign that says, in lights, it says, "Business," uh, it says, um, "Businesses are open, negocios están abiertos." Then the next page that turns, if you would turn the page over to that page, it says, "Follow the detour." So if they listen to that sign, "Business are open, follow the detours," okay, the one with us, light it up, if you can go to that one. But they don't have the, right after that one, it says, uh, "Detour, follow the detour." So they're gonna follow the detours, driver's gonna follow the detour. He's gonna go and go all the way around Third to A to Oregon, goes completely around the businesses. And if they try to go in there where it says, "Street closed," it says right there, "Road closed, local traffic only." Where's it in Spanish? It's not in Spanish. The customers don't know to get there. When we got there, you see the, the picture on the right, you see, uh, that it's open there. It wasn't like that when we got there.
Mr. Cortinas.
Okay, that, that was not, that, there was piles of rock and dirt in front of that. So just a couple of real quick, uh, uh-
Fifteen seconds.
Solutions, uh, solutions. These, these people are about ready to close those businesses. They need some funds. If we can get some ARPA funds and help them with some funds, you know, this construction si- situation. The other thing is, I think that you need to, um, uh, help them with, um, with, with the signage, get us, get the signage corrected. And, uh, and finally, I think that, uh, it's important that we have open communication, not just tonight, but every week, that there's some improvements for these businesses, can start getting some business. And number, and number one, go tonight, let's do night constructions. Even if it costs a little bit more money, you're already overhead, why not a little bit more money to do construction site at night?
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments?
First of all, good afternoon. Um, I'm Al from Al's Automotive. I'm right in front of the overpass. And like he was saying, you know, the signage, it's inside the blue area. Not in, not in the, you know, the outside, so nobody's gonna see it because it's all closed. Okay? That's all, thank you.
No, thank you, that's, that's your observation, thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
So with the signs, those were not placed until Tuesday, some Wednesday, after, after I had to ask for them. This was not placed beforehand, this was not communicated, this was me showing up, calling people, "Help, help, help," and we didn't have any parking before this, they tore down the road. So as you can see on one of the pictures, they threw some gravel down, in a sense to have access, but we had no parking for, even long before they tore the road down. You can see on that picture, there's like some gravel that they threw there in order for them to access us. They had already taken our parking in the front, which we had parking across the street and the other side, which is just, I'm not sure what the proper term is, but it's like linear parking. They had already removed that for months. Once, I seen the road tore up, once I couldn't reach the business location, once I, I didn't even know how to enter, where to park, I could, I didn't know. I went and I, I spoke to Kent and I said, "Hey, this isn't working for us. You need to do something." Andrew came and placed that blue sign, and that was the only one, and I said, "Hey, why'd you place it there? Move it out, like this, no one's gonna see that." So the signs, the road pavement, the parking, it was only addressed when we rose a concern, it wasn't planned. It wasn't like, "How are we gonna take care of you guys?" It was me, "Hey, help us, what's going on, what's going on?" I felt like it was not, um, planned or prepared for a way to help us, it was more, once it was brought to the attention. The signs were not that far apart. I drive a Mazda SUV and I couldn't go through it, and I explained that to Kent, well, not Kent, Andrew, which is who he sent me, and he said, "It's open," I said, "No, it's not, come." I said, "What if, what, what's gonna happen when I have an F four three fifty that I need to put tires on?" And he's like, "Oh, okay," I'm like, "Come look, the signs were liter-", uh, my Mazda barely fit. So these pictures were taken not the initial first day of Monday. These were done, ta- this, like this says right there, today, right? This is after. There was a few signs placed, but they're in, inside, they're, they're not visible. And unfortunately, like I said, it's, it's almost like, once we rose, brought a ruckus, was it taken care of, instead of it being planned for, we wouldn't have been in this situation, if it would have been planned for, like, the bridge took ten years planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Mr. Granbo.
Good evening, staff and council, uh, sorry, I should have spoken a little bit, or sorry, Thomas Granbo, Big Maple Properties, one oh eight North Fourth in Pasco. I guess I should have gotten after, uh, Mr. Miller, cause, uh, my, my comments sort of follow his. Uh, I didn't coordinate with him, I didn't know that he was going to be here, but, uh, two weeks ago, I believe it was, or two weeks before last week, I was specifically called out, um, as a member of the, the DPDA board, uh, to come up here and comment. Uh, I just wanted to remind, the, the few of your faces have changed here, Mayor Serrano, you, you were here, Mayor Protem Milney, you were here, and, uh, Councilmember Brajas, you were here. But back in November of, uh, twenty twenty-two, we actually did a pretty good summary of where we were at, a- as far as the DPDA, um, and I don't, I don't know why I was specifically called out, because as you should know, Leo, I wasn't even on the board when, uh, when, uh, the, the previous directors were there. The previous director was actually fired before I came on the board, so, so just so that you know. Um, and there was another comment there, I don't want to drag up old history, but, uh, there was a comment about Cinco de Mayo and participation and what caused some cancellations. Again, Leo, you were a technical consultant at that time, I believe. Uh, we all know why there were those cancellations and then the rebookings, they're all a part of the public record. And the reason that those names weren't put out there on the public record, or, sorry, at the dais, but they are part of the submitted record, was to basically save everybody the embarrassment of having been a part of that, including, uh, yourself, and including some of my other neighbors in the area, cause I don't think that they would want to be lumped in with other people's, uh, other people's actions that may have caused issues. So if you want, I would strongly recommend you go back and watch, or actually, you don't have to go back and re-watch, you were watching that presentation, cause you were commenting.
I appreciate it, let's-
Yeah, I know, sorry, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm, sorry, I should have asked a little bit of levity because I was specifically called out.
And I understand that, and, and we, we catch the point there, but let's try to keep it a little more-
Yeah, I know, sorry, my, my bad.
It's okay, it's okay, that's why-
But, yeah, so it would be, if people are interested, um, they can go back and they can watch the, uh, the presentation again, or also get the, uh, the written presentation to see exactly what happened. So that was it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am from the back.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Maria Rango. I'm the owner of two businesses, I'm in the same boat with all these, um, uh, owners of business. I have two businesses now being affected with the overpass, and I'm thankful having this new, um, overpass, uh, for the city, you know, for, to grow for a better way, to make it look better. Uh, but sadly, all of us, we're having a nightmare in money-wise, and we are here so you guys can hear from us, so we can, um, try to figure out a way to get this going better and get a better way how it was before, cause it's, two months is a lot, and we just have two weeks, it's our second week, and we are having a nightmare. And I, it's, a lot of us, um, may I ask all of us that we are in the same boat, to stand up, please? All of us, we are in the same plaza, and I'm thankful and I'm happy that we are here so you guys can hear that we are having problems because of the overpass. And like I said, I keep reminding, I know it's for a good reason, for two months, but like the architect's mentioned, he was, he was thinking, if they work nights, it will be, cost more money, but it, what will be better? If the city tried to look for any, uh, public funds or something, what will be better or the best? We're not trying to, uh, be tough or be rude, we're just asking for help and be thankful to make the city grow and trying to get the fault- And be thankful to make the city grow and trying to get the help, the help that we're looking for. To not having this nightmare. And we know that we're gonna get this from you guys. And to get the support from all of you guys, so we can keep enjoying our city, nice and clean and with a lot of businesses going well. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that, uh. You know, the sentiment of those comments, um, you know, the city, I, I realize that we are delayed in our response, but it sounds like. And, and I appreciate you might come down and explaining this, um, we're doing our best to respond to these concerns. Um, certainly, possibly some lessons learned for the future. But I do appreciate that, that everyone's coming down here to express these opinions and these, letting us know what's affecting their day-to-day. Um, do we have any additional public comments?
Good evening, council, Stephen Baumann from here in Pasco. Thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight. You should have a letter that I provided earlier today. Um, I believe the clerk is gonna pass those out. Um, very, uh, clearly written on there what the request is. Um, should be a softball compared to some of the challenges that you've had before you tonight. We just asked that you would. Consider that information and, and, uh, please, pretty please, with a cherry on top, act on it, uh, quickly. I don't think that, uh, you'll find anybody with any, any, um. Trouble, um, against that, but, uh, I think that it would be helpful if that was, that would happen rapidly. It would certainly help some projects that, that I have going on, uh, for one of my clients. And it would just, uh, it would help with expeditious, um, attainable housing. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for making us aware of this. Do we have any additional public comments?
And good evening, uh, my name is Amber Bruce, I'm a resident here in Pasco. Uh, I'm not a member of PSL, but here with my friends at PSL, um, because this is a personal issue to me, having lived in Israel and have Israeli and Palestinian friends. I support a Pasco City Council statement calling for a permanent ceasefire and an end to the apartheid occupation. Not only would this be a principled stance and send a message to our federal government about what the majority of the people in the United States want. But it would also be an important tool for keeping our local community members safe. Both Islamophobia and antisemitism have been on the rise significantly since October seventh. With several people being killed or permanently injured in hate crimes across the nation. The association of terrorism with Islam is a horrific and racist stereotype. That endangers Muslims, Arabs, Palestinians, and even many brown-skinned or turban-wearing people that a white supremacist could mistake for a Muslim. In the Tri-Cities, around fifteen hundred of our community members are Muslims. Uh, so I think it's important that our local leadership speaks out against the US-funded genocide of a Muslim-majority population. So that those who wish to commit Islamophobic hate crimes will not be emboldened to do so. And just as a conflation of Islam with terrorism emboldens hate crimes against Muslim or Muslim appearing community members. So conflation of Zionism with Judaism emboldens hate crimes against Jews. Zionism is a nationalist settler colonial project that began in the late eighteen hundreds. It is not integral to the Jewish religion or identity. In fact, many Jews are outspoken opponents of Zionism based on their deeply held Jewish beliefs. Like the Jews in the organization Jewish Voice for Peace and If Not Now. But there is a prevailing perception that antisemitism and anti-Zionism are the same thing. This false perception endangers Jews. Anti-Zionism opposes the ethno-nationalism of the modern state of Israel and the genocide that state is currently committing. Conflating opposition to ethnic discrimination and genocide with opposition to Jews themselves endangers Jews. And emboldens true antisemites to commit hate crimes against Jews. A city council statement that calls for a permanent ceasefire while making the crucial distinction between Judaism and Zionism. Would send a clear message to our community to protect both Jews and Muslims. The current aggression is not making anyone in the world safer. Not the hostages, not the Palestinians, not the Lebanese, not the Israelis, and not Americans of any religion or ethnicity. A permanent ceasefire is just the first step to safety, but it is a necessary one because we cannot bomb our way to peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments, um? Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment, move on to, uh, no, item number seven, which is reports from committees or officers. So do we have any reports from our council members? Uh, Mr. Grim.
Just very briefly, just wanted to let you know, um, Mr. Mayor, there were a couple of us and staff was very well represented. At the Holiday Inn for one of our listening sessions. And also, sounds like several of us, um, went out to the PRRC facility. And it was kind of mind-blowing how Pasco is really. In the lead in so many areas on what we're gonna do with, um, water and storage and reuse. And, um, just, just really encouraging to see us at the forefront of all that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, in addition to those events, also attended, um, Leadership Tri-City's luncheon. Um, former mayor Matt Watkins was the speaker and, uh, gave a great presentation on the aquatics facility and the work that he's doing on that project. Um, and then attended Tri-City Association of Realtors Awards Banquet. Um, I was nominated for Citizen of the Year in Los, not surprised. And then, uh, also attended a Hanford Communities Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster, Ms. Baras.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to share that I did attend one of the listening sessions over in, um, at the Leo Center in, um. East Pasco. Um, a lot of the members that are here, uh, business owners were there as well. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Fire Chief Crowley, he is not in the crowd, but he was there as well. Several of the council members were in attendance. We did speak with a lot of the, uh, business owners, you know, with their situation. And one of the things that I did pick up though was that one of, one of the individuals that was there, that attended, the one over in, um. On the west side, West Pasco, um, had noticed different concerns in comparison to the demographic in East Pasco. So the concerns were very different. Uh, but I wanna mention that, um, because there is different needs throughout our city. Um, also attended the construction for the PR, PR, PWRF. Uh, or reconstruction of that, that is an enormous project. Um, uh, I do wanna send a shout-out to Director Steve Worley via Ms. Maria Sarah. Thank you for sharing that picture with him as well. Uh, huge project, excellent, uh, for this, for the growth of City of Pasco. Um, I don't have anything else to share. Probably forgetting something, but it'll come to me.
Thank you, Ms. Baras, Mr. Milne.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, yeah, making a comment, we all were, or most of us were at the listening session and, uh. The facility there for the processors, um, I thought it was very impressive. But, uh, I also wanted to comment on that we did the Read Across America, as in the mayor was there and Councilwoman Blaisdell. At Emerson Elementary, and I had a really good time. I really enjoyed reading to the young kids. And I would, uh, recommend that any other council members, uh, get involved as well. It was one of my first time and, uh. Yeah, it was something that was really uplifting and it was really cool to, to read to kids and, uh. Yeah, anything we could do as council members to further, uh, the education in our, uh, community, I'm all for that, so thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. Uh, seeing no additional comments, we'll move on to item number eight, hearings and council actions. On ordinances and resolutions relating thereto, we have none. So we'll move on to item number nine, which is ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Item A is ordinance number four seven zero eight and resolution number four four three zero. Budget amendment and purchase authorization for A Street Sports, Sports Complex Phase one point five. Sports field lighting, and that looks like that's kicking a Director Rice.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Uh, yes, this is a return of the presentation I made last week, the workshop meeting. For the, both the purchase of lighting for A Street Soccer, uh, four sets of lights that'll cover one field. And an ordinance to amend the budget to allow expenditures of funds to cover that from our, uh, Community Park Fund project. Are there any additional questions or information I can fill in this evening for you that would help you make the decision to pass this resolution and ordinance?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Rice. Any questions or comments from council? Uh, hearing, we're seeing none. Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four seven oh eight, amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Bidenial capital budget. Projects budget ordinance number forty-six twenty by approving supplemental thereto. To provide additional appropriation in the city's Park Development Fund, Community Park Division, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Yes, we'll take the second by Mr. Harpster. Uh, having heard a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I move to approve resolution number forty-four thirty, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with. Musco Sports Lighting LLC for the purchase and installation of lighting, of field lighting at the A Street Sports Complex.
Second.
All right, hearing, uh, motion and a second by Ms. Blaisdell this time. Uh, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, again, passes unanimously.
Thank you again.
Item B, resolution number four four three one, setting a public hearing for Pasco School District Number One, Orion, Orion High School Right-Away Vacation. Uh, it's item VAC twenty twenty-three dash double oh three, and that will be, Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, this past November, the Pasco School District applied for a, uh, special permit. Uh, for the construction of a Career and College Academy High School to be located at the northeast corner of, uh, North Utah Avenue and East Salt Lake Street. Uh, the Orion, uh, Career and College Academy High School is an approximately seventy-five thousand square foot facility with capacity for, uh. About six hundred students to serve grades nine through twelve, and is intended to provide career and technical education, uh, for students. And, um, a, uh, public hearing was conducted in February, on February fourteenth by the Pasco Hearing Examiner, which was followed by a determination of approval. On, uh, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. As part of the conditions of approval. Uh, the school district is to construct, uh, the missing sidewalk along with appropriate financial improvements on the north side of East Salt Lake Street. Uh, budding the site as shown on the screen. Um, and as part of the special permit application submitted by the district, um, they requested the vacation of a portion of East Salt Lake Street right away. Uh, chapter twelve of the Pasco Municipal Code establishes, uh, the procedures and criteria for consideration. And the determination, uh, for a vacation of streets, alleys, et cetera. And, uh, on the next slide, we got a few slides here, but, um, in evaluating the proposed vacation in accordance with section twelve of the, uh, municipal code. Uh, staff has determined that the requested vac- requested vacation will not adversely affect traffic accessibility. And circulation, um, within the city as a whole. Uh, it will, it's not contemplated or needed for future use. Uh, no abutting property will become landlocked or have access substantially impaired. And that the public needs, uh, shall not be adversely affected and that the vacation will provide a public benefit or serve a public purpose. Um, or, and not be in conflict with adopted transportation plans. So, uh, the municipal code again stipulates that city council shall determine a date and time to consider the, a public hearing on the proposed vacation. Um, attached to the staff report, to the agenda report is a recommendation and a resolution for council. Um, staff, uh, recommends council move forward with the resolution and set Monday, April first, twenty twenty-four. Um, at, uh, seven PM as a date and time for a public hearing to consider the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion, Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number forty-four thirty-one, setting seven PM, Monday, April first, twenty twenty-four. As, as the time and date of a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of eats, East Salt Lake Street right of way. In blocks twenty and twenty-one, a phrase edition in Pasco, Washington.
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second by Mr. Harpster. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Moving on to item number ten, unfinished business. Seeing none, let's move on to item number eleven, new business. Mr. Lincoln, you have anything? All right, seeing none, let's move on to miss, number twelve, miscellaneous, miscellaneous discussion.
Just one, one quick item, uh, Mayor and council. Uh, today we learned that, uh, when, when Congress passed their last continuing resolution. Which goes until, I think, another two or three weeks, so not long. Um, a congressional direct spending, uh, amount of, uh, I think four point four million dollars is currently in there for the PWRF. So that was good news and we'll keep monitoring to make sure that it stays in the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Uh, any miscellaneous by council, Ms. Blaisdell?
I would like to make a motion to, um. Regarding the cable bridge lighting, to actually vote on it tonight.
I'll second that.
I think we should, uh, have, so is that your complete motion?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so just to clarify, the motion is to vote on, are we directing staff or allocating funding? Or all of the above?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Ferguson, I see a light.
Sure, yeah, so currently that item is scheduled for April first, uh, and that was done by, um, motion of council, uh, voted on that to set that over. So if now the, the goal is to, uh, change that to another date, uh, to bring that up, uh, uh, it hasn't been. Uh, the materials aren't in the packet, uh, it's not on the agenda this evening. Uh, it, uh, you could move forward on it, uh, I wouldn't recommend it, but, uh, this evening in terms of, uh, actually voting on it. What the thing you could vote on tonight is to bring it back sooner, uh, if you would prefer. Uh, we can always do that, but, um.
Okay, uh, is the concern of voting on it tonight related to it not being publicized?
Yeah, so it's not properly noticed, uh, and it's not in the packet, uh, the materials aren't, uh, in it as well. That doesn't make it, uh, per se illegal by any stretch, but, uh, it certainly, um, uh, could cause issues if, uh, folks felt like they didn't have adequate, uh. Due process. I mean, it's been an item, in this particular case, it's, it's probably, uh, pretty minimal because it's been heard a couple of times, I believe, at this point. So, um, you, you could move forward on it legally, but. My recommendation is always to.
To cover it.
Walk with scissors.
Right. Or not have scissors. Um, so with that, do, do you still wanna make your motion? And just, uh, let's, let's clarify what it is, if it's there. Again, I, I think if it's to. Fund it, that's one thing, if it's to.
I wanna fund it, I wanna vote on funding it tonight.
So that's, uh, so I'm thinking the motion might be something like, uh, vote to. Move, uh, to fund the cable ve- bridge lighting project tonight. Eric, uh, Mr. Ferguson, do we need to somehow rescind?
No, I think that's what I heard, uh, maybe I, I didn't.
No, I mean, but do we need two separate motions? One to rescind the prior action and then one to actually move forward, or is it adequate to just say?
No, if you move forward, then it dies.
So I want to move to make a motion.
You're gonna make a motion to?
To vote on the cable bridge lighting, funding tonight.
Okay, and I heard Mr. Prowl, is you still a second?
I second that.
Okay, uh, do we have any discussion from council? Uh, are these lights for this or for future?
Technically, just, just to be clear, so technically what we've done is we've, we've voted. And then we need to go forward on that motion since it's been seconded to bring it back for, and as an action item this evening. Then we take on the actual, actual action item. But at this point, all that's been voted on and seconded. Is to bring it back up for this meeting, not the April first meeting.
Okay.
So we would need a vote on to even make it an action item.
So just to be clear, we're making a motion to, to, to act tonight, but we're not acting with this motion until the next motion.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, so, well, I'll just go for my right. Grim, Mr. Grim.
Mr. Mayor, I still stand opposed to this. Um, there's too many unanswered questions. Who is gonna be in control of this and, you know, what, what causes, what all this is gonna support? And I stand resolutely against it.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Ms. Baras.
My comments in regards to this, I, I would, I would support this, however. I would like to have that packet of information in front of me. Um, I would vote for moving the date sooner. Um, I would vote for having the public to have an opinion on that. Um, stickler for process, I'm sorry, not sorry, but, um, not at this moment.
Fair enough, thank you. Mr. Prowls.
Uh, this is for something else.
What?
My comments are for something else.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second, we've heard, uh, discussion, so let's go ahead and do a roll call. Debbie, uh, on this, on, on the motion to move this to tonight. Debbie, uh, on this, on, on the motion to move this to tonight.
Thank you for clarification. All right, uh, Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Grim.
No.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas.
Yes.
Councilmember Brahas.
Yes.
Count, uh, Mayor Protem Milne.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
Yes.
It passes.
So with that, as I understand from legal counsel, we need now a second motion to, uh, actually take the action, which would be, now the motion would be to fund the project.
No, it would be a motion to approve, it would be a motion to approve the I L A for the cable bridge lighting.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the cable lighting I L A.
Yep, that's good enough. Cable bridge lighting.
I'll second that.
Uh, do, uh, can't imagine we have any other, other discussion on this. Do we have any other discussion on this? Okay. Uh, you're still
No.
Okay. Uh, Debbie, if we can do another roll call, please.
Certainly, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Grim.
No.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas.
Yes.
Councilmember Brahas.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Milne.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
Yes.
That's six against one, so it passes.
Okay, thank you. Do you need a break to get a drink, too?
Oh, no, I was good. No, we just, no, no, I'm fine, no, I'm fine.
Okay, your lights back on again, so Mr. Brahas.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, for earlier, for allowing people to kind of go over their pre-medicine, um, to kind of let us know, uh, you know, their, um, comments about the Lewis Street, um, closure. So I'm just gonna come to the chase, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion right now. Um, my motion is I move the two direct staff to look into the city's ability to allocate funding to provide businesses, some funds impacted by the Lewis Street over past construction project.
Ms. Brahas?
My comment is in regards to, uh, miscellaneous discussion, not on this.
Okay, um, then, so just to clarify, you're
That, that's what I want to clarify, so is, what I heard was a motion to direct staff to investigate sort of potential sources of funding?
Correct.
Okay.
Not to fund it, just to investigate it. Okay, I'll second that. Um, any discussion on this issue? Still lit for something else?
Still lit for something else.
All right, so we've got a motion, we got a second. Uh, Debbie, let's go ahead and do another roll call on this one.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas.
Yes.
Councilmember Brahas.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Grim.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Milne.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
Yes.
That's unanimous. It passes.
So just so the public understands, and can we get, um, Victoria, do I remember? Valerie, she gone? Okay. Can you translate what we just did, which is this, uh, Mr. Peralas asked, uh, oh, yeah, I guess maybe Blanche.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Sorry, Blanche.
Basically, lo que vamos, lo que acaba de pasar ahorita, eh, todo el concilio estuvo de acuerdo en tomar un voto para investigar opciones para fondos, para buscar fondos que les puedan ayudar, un subsidio o algo que les puedan ayudar a todos los que han sido afectados. El voto es para buscar opciones, no para designar una cantidad, okay? Basicamente, vamos a buscar cómo les podemos ayudar, qué, qué ayudas, apoyos, uh, podemos encontrar como ciudad para ayudarles, okay?
Thank you, Blanche, sorry guys. Um, with that, do you want a relight? Ms. Brahas?
So, disculpen, he tenía, eh, quiero hacer comentarios. Los voy a hacer en inglés y luego les traduzco, okay? Um, so I was just letting them know that I would translate back into Spanish. Um, my comments today, um, are in regard to having heard from a lot of the business owners that are here, a lot of concerns that were brought up already, um, but I did have a lot of, uh, individuals also sending pictures and concerns in regards to some misinformation that could be out there in the community. I know at the listening session, a lot of people brought concerns over to Ms. Maria, uh, to staff, to city staff, uh, in regards to everything that's going on and, um, in regards to those funds that were discussed. Um, there's, there's an organization out there that is, um, you know, I'm gonna choose my words here wisely. There's an organization out there that has been approaching some business owners, um, and they're expressing their concerns. Uh, they did share those concerns with staff as well. So I would just encourage everyone, all the business owners, to please always ask for an identification. If someone comes to your business saying that they are with the city of Pasco, please always ask for, uh, uh, identification. Call city staff directly to confirm anything that you're hearing is coming from the city or coming from staff. Les voy a, uh, decir a todos que, eh, los comentarios que hemos escuchado de todos ustedes es que alguien, alguna organización les está acercando con ustedes a darles información o pedirles información. Este, mi único consejo a ustedes es que si alguien va a su, a su lugar de negocio diciendo que es de la ciudad de Pasco, por favor, pidan identificación que diga que trabajan para la ciudad de Pasco o son personal de la ciudad de Pasco. No se crean de todo lo que escuchen allá, como les digo, para ustedes, para sus beneficios, para su seguridad, confirmen que trabajan para la ciudad de Pasco. No cuesta nada pedir una identificación de con quién están hablando, okay? Es lo más seguro que pueden hacer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brahas. Um, uh, Mr. Grim and Harpster, I'm not sure who's first. You can either duke it out or, okay, Mr. Grim?
That's fine. Um, I just wanted to thank the community for coming out tonight. Um, you know, three of us up here are retail business owners too, and we understand how something like this can drastically affect your business, and I appreciate every one of you guys for coming out tonight. Um, as the mayor said, I think there are some lessons to learn here. I mean, I, we hear you loud and clear, you know, I think some of this was a little more reactive than, you know, proactive and the, the blue sign there I saw on the sidewalk, the first thing when, you know, I saw that picture too was, you know, that's too close, that's, you know, within the project itself, you know, we should have some more signage, um, um, further back and was very well put by several tonight in Spanish would be really helpful too, so. You know, perhaps there's some other things we can do, some, you know, I know that the city is, um, you know, been out on their social media page, but perhaps some live videos and some other things, and then, yeah, so, some of the other ideas about, you know, going to working six days to, you know, shorten the construction time to take the burden a little bit more now, but, you know, maybe it'll get over sooner, and these are, you know, some, you know, big questions that I know staff will, you know, look into and, um, try to work through and everything, but anyways, just wanting to let you know that we hear you loud and clear and we take this seriously too, and um, wh- what you're saying is very important to us tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Mr. Harpster?
Mayor. Um, first comment was thank you to Ms. Valerie for translating tonight for the group. Um, appreciate that. Um, this letter, Mr. Bowman presented from the school district, um, question staff can, I'd like to know the options on this, whether a, I don't think a code amendment just happened overnight, but it seems as simple as simply adding multifamily, single-family residences comma multifamily or, or an and. Um, I'm also wondering if maybe it's quicker to do a, um, sort of a, I don't know, like a deviation request letter. To the school district's point, they're can, they said their, uh, our concern is highlighted, um, sorry. Um, concerned about arbitrary application of the code and resulting challenges, and that makes sense, and so, um, just wondering from Director Gonzalez, what would be easier, or maybe staff's presence submitting the code permanently or, um, the deviation request letter that would not amend it, but would make a, uh, exception in this case for specific reasons? Uh, uh, thank you, uh, council members. So staff did reach out, uh, to the school district, to the school district to ask for the criteria that they used to determine uh, the approval of the, uh, deferral, given that, um, uh, there was a denial of a previous request within the last six months, so it'd be important for staff to know uh, when we work with our stakeholders, which, um, uh, are approved versus which are not approved, and I think that speaks to the, the language in the Pasco Municipal Code, which, uh, does not allow for multifamily. I think staffs, um, uh, has been in contact with the school district about opening up that discussion with the school district about potential deferral waivers of the school impact fee, similar to what we've done with um, our other fees, uh, late last year. Um, uh, in this particular situation, the school district did confirm that they intended to, uh, uh, to permit the deferral, so we just asked for that process since it's not been one that we've been through before.
Sorry, what was, I, I didn't hear the last ten words.
To approve, the school district did, uh, confirm their approval of the deferral. We just asked for additional assistance, given that it's not a deferral, a deferral has not been something, uh, granted before.
So then the path forward would be a, a deviation letter approving the deviation from the code or?
Yeah, in, in this case, because the city sort of acts as a middle facilitator, uh, if it was our own impact fee, we'd have a lot more, um, um, authority, uh, but given that we're just a facilitator in this process, if the school district is willing to, to, to grant the deferral, then the city will certainly um, com- comply with that wish. Um, in the future, um, and in current, uh, discussions, uh, we are initiating with the school district about it, a formal process to actually defer or waive school impact fees based on criteria the school and the city and, uh, development community can come to terms with.
I guess I'm confused, cause it, it, and I'm, and I'm not trying to be facetious, so forgive me, I really am confused. It's the Pasco Municipal Code that, that, that this is referencing, so I understand it's the school district's fee, but can you understand the connection of why we wouldn't be able to amend our code?
We, we would need to work with the school district, given that the impact fee was established via their capital improvement plan, which we formally adopt as required into our comprehensive plan. So like we do our own rate studies, et cetera, for fees, et cetera, the school district does the same as well, so if there is a effort to amend or change the way that fee is, uh, collected or not, um, the school district would certainly want to weigh in on that process. Given that it could impact their ability to, to serve the, the needs, uh, coming out of the impact fee to begin with.
I'm not, I'm not getting it. Okay. Um, maybe I'll just follow up with an email this week. Um, and then last item of discussion, a couple of months ago, we talked about adding public comment to workshop meetings. And it's my understanding, there's no PMC governing that, and we can simply change the informal rules, so to speak. Um, I know, Mr. Ferguson, you were gonna look into that.
Sure.
And was just wondering, is there any update on that or?
But Stan says, yes, so I, I had a, a nice, uh, email exchange with, uh, Councilmember Grim this afternoon, uh, and that is currently scheduled for the retreat. That's gonna be one of four items that I'm gonna, uh, try to cram, uh, into my portion of the retreat, uh, and so I'll have, uh, the goal will be to make sure that we've got, uh, uh, get a good view from what folks are doing statewide. I, I'm not familiar with that, I haven't seen that before, uh, with other councils, but, uh, we'll, we'll do some more, um, uh, not only, uh, there's not gonna be a whole lot legally out there for it, because it's pretty, uh, uh, it's pretty loose with regard to any kind of direction. Uh, public comment is usually always allowed in, in a particular setting, so, uh, but we'll wa- also want to get some good anecdotal evidence from other folks, uh, that have, uh, had that process and seeing kind of what some of the challenges are and what some of the benefits can be, so I can make sure that everybody goes in eyes wide open if that's something that we want to do.
I'll, uh, I'll just speak for myself. I've attended several, um, Franken County Commissioner meetings, City of Richland Council meetings, and City of Kennewick Council meetings, all organizations which, uh, allow public comment during all meetings, workshop and regular, and oftentimes twice, and I mean, at the beginning, at the end, City of Richland, for example, has public comment at the beginning of the meeting for any item on the agenda, to include the consent agenda, and then at the end of the meeting, they have public comment again for just general thoughts. And so, um, I, I suppose we can wait until the retreat, um, it, I prefer not to, but I'll leave that up to the rest of the group to weigh in if they want to.
Uh, Mr. Milne, yeah, Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to echo, uh, Councilman Grim's comments, uh, about the underpass as far as the business being affected. I know we're further west, so it doesn't affect us as much, but we have actually seen a decrease in our business, uh, being on Thirteenth and Lewis, just because we get a lot of traffic coming from Oregon Street being industrial traffic. So anything we could do, I am very interested to see what the staff can come up with and, uh, definitely be able to weigh options, not so much for myself, but I, I do understand businesses down there are more dire straits than I am. But, uh, I just want to echo the comments, I thought they were very well said, and, uh, yeah, hopefully we could get something done. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. Uh, Mr. Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more comment. The discussion part was way down in my notes, got kind of lost in the overpass stuff. But just in regards to what Mr. Harpster was bringing up, um, I just think about the memorial pool last week. We brought up in, um, a workshop meeting, and then it got moved to the consent agenda, so really, the public never had an opportunity to comment on that because it was brought up in a workshop meeting and then immediately went to the consent agenda. So yes, I agree with Mr. Harpster, obviously, that I think, um, you know, the, and we do give the community a lot of opportunities for input. I don't want to, through the social media, through staff, through, you know, other opportunities, but I think, um, it would be really important for us to open that up on workshop meetings and potentially at the end of meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, before I get to you, I'm gonna go to Peralas. Mr. Peralas?
Appreciate it. Yeah, no, the, I mean, I remember we talked about this a couple of months ago, and so I would just say, I, I'm willing to entertain a motion if it's made tonight, and we can perhaps vote it on tonight.
Okay, so this is the miscellaneous discussion portion of the program. Okay, so I guess just as a quick reminder, this is not the time where we should be taking a whole bunch of action. I'm happy to, uh, look at the issue. If you guys want to look at it before the retreat, I can, I can make it a priority, but we've been a little busy doing a few things first couple of months, so we'll be happy to come back with you next week if you need us to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to add public comment to workshop meetings starting next week.
I'll second that.
It's in your code. It's in the Pasco Municipal Code, that you have public, you have workshop and you don't have public comment. We have to do that by ordinance.
Okay, so now I offered two different things this evening. Emailed staff earlier and was told it's not in the PMC and it's simply informal rules. Did I misunderstand?
Probably misunderstanding. Sorry, can you repeat? That was my misunderstanding.
So just to clarify, Ms. first, we, we cannot proceed this evening with that?
No, you cannot. What, you, you can make a motion, but it won't be effective, uh, and you could do a resolution, you could do some kind of motion, but
Any motion would be just to bring it back at the next regular meeting or just leave it?
Certainly do that.
So we had a motion and a second, we need to strike that, right?
What was the motion?
Uh, he had moved to do it tonight. Mr. Peralas seconded it. You advised against it, but we still have a live motion to second, right?
So you can do one of two things. You can, Mr. Harpster can rescind his motion, or you can, uh, vote on it.
Vote on it, okay.
Yeah, rescind that motion.
Okay. Do, Mr. Harpster, do you have, uh, particular direction you would like to offer to staff?
Yeah, we can bring that item. A, uh, I suppose a resolution would be needed. I'm not sure at this point.
It would have to be an ordinance, uh, so we'd have to set a special meeting if you want to bring it back next week.
It doesn't need to be next week. The next regularly, regular council meeting's fine, um. Do, I mean, that's gonna put us at March eighteenth or so, a few days before the retreat, um, so we'll just forget it and wait till the retreat. Enough further.
Okay. Do we have anything else for miscellaneous discussion tonight? Okay, with that, we will move on to item number thirteen, closed session. Um, the purpose of this closed discussion is this, to discuss collective bargaining unit negotiations per revised code of Washington forty two point three zero point one four zero subsection four, subsection A. Um, it is intended to be five minutes. We gonna be able to keep that, Mr. Ferguson, or do I need to amend that? Okay, uh, how many minute break? Uh, let's, let's do three and a half minutes till eight fifty five. We will, uh, so we're gonna take a break till eight fifty five, then we'll go back and do our, uh, collective bargaining, uh, hopefully till nine. So with that, taking a break. Then we'll go back and do our, uh, collective bargaining, uh, hopefully till nine. So with that, taking a break.